All right, good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board from Monday, July 7, 2020, 2025. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58, Community Access Media Channel 9, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our community prayer. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your Spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen. All right. Our first item this evening, as always, is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public would like to address the board?
Well, yeah. As citizens.
As citizens.
Yeah.
Evening. If you could just introduce yourself for the folks at home.
Yes, I'm Ellen Blanchard. I live on Main Street. And I have worked for the town. I worked for the town for a long time.
All right, Ms. Blanchard, if you could just make sure you speak into the microphone.
Hello?
Thank you.
Okay. Ellen Blanchard, Main Street. I am here as a citizen, taxpayer, and I just happen to also be chairman of the Board of Assessors. And the reason that Mike and I are here is because we're both citizens and we understand that the assessor's office is going to be losing some space. So there are a lot of things that we need to express. First of all, almost 65% of the revenue for the budget is handled by the assessor's office and the board. We generate the monies for the tax levy, motor vehicle excise, pilots, solar, and perhaps a potential battery storage pilot, housing pilots, battery -- oh, I said that. We handle rollback taxes. New growth is done by us. We also have a lot to do with confidential information from other residents. We review every chapter land application. We review exemptions for those who are elderly or blind or veterans and so on. And every single chapter land application is inspected, reviewed by us every year to make sure that what they are submitting matches what's in the computer and vice versa. With all of these personal applications that come in, a lot of times, there are medical reasons. There are income reasons. We often have to ask for, right, income tax information. And hardships are something that we always have to deal with every year. So because we have to determine the eligibility, we need to have space where we can discuss all of this information that's right in our filing cabinets that are in our office, as well as every single parcel in the town has its own file. All the chapter land applications are kept separately according to owner. All of the exemptions are also kept separately according to whom they apply. We really need to -- for people to understand that our job doesn't end on June 30th like an accountant's job does. We are constantly reviewing every parcel in the town over a nine-year period, and all of that information has to stay in the department. So and we're crowded as it is and we've lost our conference room, which makes it difficult to have our meetings during executive session because people can be standing out in the hallway and hear everything that we're saying. So we have a problem. And we're hoping that things will move forward in a better managed way for our department.
All right. Thank you for making us aware.
Mike Paddock, 23 West Street, longtime resident, fairly longtime member of the Board of Assessors. I've been on for 14 years now. I've seen a lot of things happen. Nearly 10 years ago, the former administration took a wrecking ball to our department and changed everything and made things rather difficult. And we lost key people and things fell apart. And it took years to rebuild to get to the state of function that we're at now. We are as good as we've ever been, and it's been really good to see. And nobody knows this -- nobody knows what goes on in the assessing department until it doesn't happen. Right? So I see a situation that can occur where, well, sooner, maybe sooner than later, we're going to be looking for another assessor. Are we going to get a qualified, a quality qualified candidate who wants to operate as a department head out of a closet? I kind of doubt that. We do need room. Ellen is correct. We need room to be able to talk to people. We need files to be available. We need to be able to function, and it's rather difficult to do as the space has shrunk and shrunk some more. I understand that the town has space issues and that we need more people and maybe we need a third floor, whatever the case may be. But I would hope that you guys would consider both learning from mistakes of the past so we don't have to repeat them again and dig out of the holes that we've had to dig. We don't want to put our workers in places where they're uncomfortable. They've, you know, it's a concession to give up space. It was a concession for us to give up our meeting room to meet in an open table like we do. It doesn't feel as private as it needs to for -- some of our meetings are in excess of half the time or in executive session because we deal with sensitive information. It's a concession for workers to give up their space, right? And to be crammed in and pushed harder. We may lose more than just normal attrition to people who know this town, who knows how it works and can get the job done well because we have messed with their space and taken, in their perception, something from them. So it's hard to get a team to work together and work together well. We're doing really well. We'd like to keep that going. We hate to get squished in a situation where we can't function. So we hope you consider that as decisions are made and we'll do what we ever have to do to make it work.
Just to re- remind, I know this is an important issue, but I do have to limit citizens' participation to three minutes apiece. So if you could just sum up. I know this is important.
Okay. The other issue that is really critical is the constant disruptions of people from other departments walking in, just walking in and going to talk to whomever they have sitting in there and standing around in our office, talking. And it's very uncool. It's just not a good working situation.
We'll discuss the issue with the town administrator, okay?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming in. Are there any other members of the public who would like to address the board this evening? Anyone? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to our next item, which is an application for appointment to the Carver Cultural Council. Erin Banbury. Erin, would you like to come up? We appreciate you applying for the cultural council. Is there anything you'd like to say to the board?
Sure. So I applied because I don't think that anybody from my graduating class of 2014 is really involved in committees or select board or really that interested, to be completely honest. So I wanted to make sure that my peers are represented. I also grew up in Carver, lived there, moved when I was like 22, lived in New Bedford for a little while, lived in Attleboro, came back to Carver. And I spend a lot of time in the community. I'm an in-home therapist and psychiatric rehabilitation counselor. So I work with a lot of very vulnerable people. And what I see in a lot of other towns is there's a lot of good community resources to support people. And I think that Carver has the potential to also offer some more community resources and just some more togetherness, I guess I could call it, to support the people in our community that are the most vulnerable.
Great. Thanks for stepping up. Questions from the board?
No, I thank you for coming forward, Erin, and volunteering for the cultural council.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Banbury. Could you just tell the audience what your master of science is in?
Yes, my master's degree is in psychiatric rehabilitation counseling. It is a little bit different than substance abuse counseling. So it incorporates a wide variety of people with different abilities. So mostly what it is is mental health counseling for people with psychiatric disabilities, so people who struggle with bipolar disorder, depression, anxiety. I have a lot of experience working with adults with psychotic disorders. Right now, I'm working in home therapy with children and families. I worked at Tom's State Hospital for a little while. I've worked residential places. So I've seen a lot of stuff. And I've seen that communities can come together to support people and try to keep, like I said, you know, vulnerable people part of the community and part of the place that they live.
Great. Thank you very much.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Erin Banbury to the Carver Cultural Council.
I'll second that motion.
All right, thank you. Before we go forward, Mr. Carter, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I just wanted to say again to thank you for stepping up and, you know, having it's the first applied group on the Carver Cultural Council, I think is great. So I applaud you for stepping up.
Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewens says aye.
Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Great. Thank you. Congratulations. And so you'll get a letter from the town clerk and when you get that letter, if you just come in and be sworn in, okay?
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda this evening is an application for a common victory license for Village Pizza and Subs LLC, which is located at 239 Tremont Street. Is there anyone here from Village Pizza? Sure, if you'd like to come up. Thank you for coming in this evening. You could just introduce yourself for the folks at home.
Sure. Jeff Peterson, longtime resident in the Carver or in the process of opening the pizza shop at 239 Tremont.
All right, great, thank you. Are questions from the board?
I had one. I was confused about the application because you gave your name and then you gave someone else's name.
My sister is my partner.
Okay.
Sid Savistano is my sister. She lives in Carver as well.
Oh, okay.
I started the business and everything by myself and it kind of just grew into a bigger project. So protect my interest, I took her in as a partner. In case anything happened to me, it wouldn't have been a nightmare. So she's actually the -- the LLC is in her name. I'm listed as a manager for the company. I make all the day-to-day decisions, construction. It is mine, but.
But she does the heavy lifting. Just kidding.
Yes, ma'am.
Got it. Thanks so much. Was this the site that had the fence?
No.
No, okay. That's all I have.
All right, great. Mr. Carter, do you have anything?
Is this a new business?
Yes, it is. Well, it's new. It's at Dave's Liquor and Convenience Store. They used a deli in there when the current owners bought it 20 years ago. They attempted to run it for two years and what used to be a success quickly failed or didn't. So it sat empty as a storage unit for 17 years. I approached them last fall and started talking and came to an agreement to renovate the kitchen. The kitchen's finished. All the inspections are done. Border Health was there this morning. Building Department, electrical, plumbing, everything. It's a beautiful kitchen. It's just a remodeled kitchen. It was an existing kitchen with nothing complied with code. So it's now a complete -- it's a state-of-the-art kitchen.
And most importantly, when's the opening date? Because I can't wait to come by.
Tomorrow.
Well, there you go.
If all goes well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the license for Village Pizza and Subs located at 239 Tremont Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewens says aye.
Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
All right. Unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
We have one other application for a license this evening. It should have been listed higher on the agenda, but somehow it got put down to 7:40. So if the board has no objection, we'll take the applications for entertainment and the Sunday license for Three Sips Brewing. I think we have a gentleman from Three Sips. Any objection from the board? All right. Thank you for coming in this evening.
Yeah, appreciate it.
So the first item on our agenda is an entertainment license for Three Sips Brewing Company LLC. I think you were in a little bit earlier, a little while ago, to talk about this?
Today?
Yeah, no, earlier in the year.
Yes, yes.
So why don't you tell us where we are?
So we had our soft opening last weekend. Great success. I was told, I'm aware of the concern about the fence that we installed on the outside perimeter of the beer garden. I just want to start to say by, I have small children. I have as young as two years old. Safety is an absolute priority for us. My friend, my brother has children. There will be many children there. Having said that, it was deemed safe by the fire department upon their safety inspection, as well as the building department. They saw no potential risk of danger for small children. I am aware that it's not identical to what is seen on the plan.
Chairman, could the applicant identify himself?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Daniel Mall, owner of Three Sips Brewing Company.
Thank you.
I'm aware it's not identical to what the sample was on the plan. We did install a rolled picketed fence, tightened every six feet or so by six-foot stakes in the ground, secured with metal wiring. If you're asking that we install what is identical on that plan, it's going to put a massive damper on us financially and prolong our opening. Asking if it's necessary that you're requiring that type of fence, if maybe you could, you know, have a contingency where we could take care of it at a later date once we just get revenue coming in. But I can assure that it's safe for children.
All right, thank you. Before we go to discussion, Mr. Cannon, have we had any issues from the building department or anything?
No, we have not.
No issues with inspections or anything like that?
No, no issues, sorry. No issues with inspections, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. All right, questions from the board?
So there's no plan? So, yeah, I'm a little confused. I remember when we came in here, we talked about the plans and everything and you were going to put a taller fence, I think it was more like a stockade-type fence, around the property to prevent anyone from getting into the road and such. So you're saying this is going to be the permanent solution?
I'm not saying it's a permanent solution. I basically just say, to my understanding, a stockade fence, I thought, was a picketed fence. It is a rolled four-foot picketed fence. We did meet the four-foot requirement. I'm kind of here asking if you would allow us to just have that operate for now and potentially, once we get revenue coming in to upgrade the fence, once we have money coming in. But like I said, it was deemed safe by the fire department upon his safety inspection, as well as the building department. So.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Hewens?
So when did you come here last to this board? I'm just trying to remember.
When we got the official okay was, geez.
Couple of months ago at least, wasn't it?
Was it the fall? October? I could be wrong. September?
I thought it was February. I'm sorry.
February. Oh, geez. Oh, wow.
I don't think it was that long ago that it was that year.
It was a while ago.
Yeah.
All right, I think I'm thinking of when we got the official okay from the building department to move forward. So I may have some dates wrong, but.
So when were you here? At the select board meeting?
Apparently, it was February.
Okay. So did you talk to anyone about what a stockade fence means?
I guess I -- not quite. I guess you just requiring a four-foot sturdier fence was my understanding.
Were there conditions that the select board put on him for a four-foot stockade fence? Do we remember?
It was a fence.
There were conditions, weren't there?
As shown on the plan, if you do look in the plan up in the upper right-hand corner, it is a four-foot stockade fence. Now, I'll tell you, it does look like a picket fence to me as opposed to, on the photo that you have, a true stockade fence is in the background there, I see. So the height of the fence is not an issue. You know, measured at four feet. That's by our staff.
Stockade fence. This is, I would call it either a snow fence or a construction fence. They're put up temporarily on construction sites and sometimes by the highway for big drifts. I don't think they're meant to be permanent. That's the only reason I'm bringing it up. I don't know about anyone else, but I'd be willing to give him a timeframe because I think we need a stockade fence. That's a pretty dangerous corner.
So you want something that's not, you cannot visibly see through? Is that?
So I will give you this picture, and it's on your property in the back. This fence is a stockade fence.
Okay.
Okay. Now, I don't think it has to be that high. I think it has to be four feet.
I would agree with Ms. Hewens that the fence in the photo, I think it's up is, to me, that doesn't look like a permanent fence. That looks like a temporary.
It's not, yeah.
Right. I wonder, I wonder, Mr. Cannon, I mean, we have the building department that has a little more expertise, I think, than we do on the appropriate type of enclosures for this type of thing. Could we issue a license? Is some way to word it that we issue a license with a condition that the building department go out and review the, come back and make a fencing recommendation to us? Is there some way to do that? Maybe there isn't at this point. I don't know.
Well, you know what? I think you could maybe, I don't know, if it's a temporary license and give them a one-month temporary license, then we revisit it in a month or again, with a recommendation from the building inspector? You know, you can't tell on this fence is how sturdy this fence is.
Well, that's.
Again, I think that's the concern, right, really?
As I said.
We didn't test it, I can tell you right now.
From my years of being in permitting, this is a temporary construction fence.
And I agree with you.
I agree.
I agree with you. Would the board be open to issuing some type of temporary license with a?
One-month license.
Yeah.
How about we give them a two-month license?
Yeah, I think that.
I don't think anyone wants to make this hard on you.
Thank you.
We need a better fence.
Maybe we could appreciate that. I mean, we did get the okay from Jesse, from the fire department deeming it safe and Rod as well.
But that was on the building?
Yes.
Not on the fence?
Maybe we could ask.
Oh, no, on the perimeter fence.
Maybe we could ask the gentleman to come back for our first meeting in September. Would that be okay with the board if we scheduled that? I don't know what the.
It's just, you know, it's a busy corner.
Of course it is.
It's very clear you want to keep your customers safe.
Yeah, September 2nd.
Absolutely.
It's not an issue.
Like I said, I have children myself.
Would that work for you, sir, if we asked you to come back for our September 2nd meeting?
Absolutely.
And discuss this? Mr. Carter, any input or comment here?
Yeah, I've got a few questions. I am looking at the photo of the fence. I'm trying to recall the meaning. Wasn't the main concern that we wanted this so that young children wouldn't be able to, like, I don't know, get away and run out of the parking lot into the street, correct?
Of course.
It's not supposed to, I guess, protect, like, God forbid, a car jumped a rock or something like that and tried to hit the fence. It's not meant to protect from the outside in, from the inside, people going out, correct?
I believe that's correct.
Well, it would be nice if it worked both ways.
It would be. But I just, to your point, I don't think, I don't think, I'm all for getting you open and coming back and revisiting this, but just my opinion, I just don't think the current fence seems to be a temporary wide construction fence of something that I think, I guess I wouldn't feel comfortable seeing that as a permanent scenario. But I think coming back at a future date, I don't have a problem with that.
So our first meeting is September 2nd?
September 2nd, yes. Let me just double-check the date, just to be certain. Yeah, September 2nd, is that what you have? Yeah, okay. So if there's no further discussion, is there a motion?
I still have questions on the entertainment license. So will the entertainment be inside, outside, or both?
We're going for both.
Okay. Was, I recall in the past, we've had, so there'll be probably microphones, amplifiers and things like that. Were there, did the fire department weigh in? I know they've had discussions before about, you know, if you have, you know, alarms and things like that, that the noise is not above the alarm that would go off.
Yes.
Have we gotten any input from the fire department on any inspections for the license?
We have. I did speak to Mr. Boyle about it. In this case, he is not concerned with the nature of the entertainment, more of a solo artist singing into a microphone or really on an acoustic guitar. So he is quite comfortable that the noise level will not exceed the noise level of the fire alarm. And outside, he's not worried about the outside.
And so the board, the board knows, I have had discussions with Mr. Cannon about this this, and in the future, we're not going to bring applications forward to the board, unless they've met that requirement. So, you can feel confident when one comes to the board that that's been, that's been met.
Okay. Thank you.
Nothing else, Mr. Ryan?
No.
That's it?
Yeah. So, the application does say acoustic set, person, and guitar?
Yes.
So, there's no microphone?
There is a microphone.
Yes.
Asking him.
Yes, there will be a microphone and possibly a small speaker.
For the singer.
For the singer.
For the singer, and that's what Mr. Boyle was specific about.
And if we ever wanted to do, like, a full band, that's when Mr. Boyle said we would have to upgrade the fire alarm system.
All right.
Okay, so...
Has a question?
Yes, Mr. Carter.
So, I'm just trying to remember, there was, I'm just trying to be fair to all parties. I believe, wasn't there some, somebody that came to us that was doing something over by Silo Marketplace that, I think this one first came up, that they were going to have sound system of some sort? And I know Mr. Boyle, Mr. Boyle talked about some kind of zoning ordinance about a microphone scenario.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we're treating everybody fairly.
Yeah, there's a noise ordinance as well.
There is. There is, yes. And we actually just talked to discuss that. Mr. Cannon says, he's spoken with Mr. Boyle, and he's good on this. Correct, Mr. Cannon?
But that's not the noise ordinance, is it?
Well, that's not the noise, and I believe noise ordinance would be handled by the police, if there was a, an outstanding noise ordinance. I don't know what the timeframe is in Carver, I don't. It's at 10:00. I mean, that's normal for our community.
Yeah. I think that, I agree with you. I think that would be handled.
Well, maybe the applicant could find out what that is, so he could comply with it.
So, through you, Mr. Chairman, the town administrator, can I get some kind of write-up that explains why it's okay for one vendor to do it and not the other?
Can you get the rules out to the board from Mr. Boyle? Perhaps Deputy Boyle could just send us a, send us the rules on that?
Sure. Yes, I can.
Would that be okay, Mr. Carter?
Yes. I just want to know how the interpretation was done for one and not the other, that's all.
Yeah. I mean, as I recall, it was done through an inspection by the fire department, but I, I could be wrong, so...
And I'm sorry, Mr. Carter, what was the issue again?
I just want to make sure we're handling all these commercial businesses the same way. I know that the person who came before us was shocked that they just found out there was something with a microphone requirement, I think, for noise, that was going to stop them from doing, running their business. But here, it seems like we have somewhat of the same scenario, but it got approved. So, that's all. I might, I might not be saying it correctly, but just a write-up onto what's the difference between the two scenarios, and why this one is fine.
Mr. Cannon?
Just to summarize quickly, I believe the other scenario, John, it was mostly a band that the fire department was concerned with, again, with multiple amplifiers, a drumset that may drown out the noise of the fire alarm if it were to go off.
Well, if I recall, I think what Mr. Carter's saying on the other one, we did not give a license for any amplified, you know, vocals or instruments. We actually, it was written in the license that that was not allowed. So, and that was also due to the building being inspected and the, and the fire alarm, and they felt that it would be, you know, possibly, could be louder than the alarm going off. So, maybe in this case, I'm not sure if it's a different alarm system. So, that would be, I think, what Mr. Carter's saying is, can we understand, you know, is there, is there a classification of the alarm system that allows to have amplified or non-amplified voice, vocals, and instruments?
And to your point, Mr. Carter, it's absolutely important that everybody is treated in exactly the same manner. So, that's always the goal of the board, to make sure that's the, that's the case. And I guess, Mr. Cannon, in this case, can you assure the board that those inspections have taken place, and Assistant Deputy Boyle is, is good with that?
Yes, I am. Yes, I can. I spoke to him directly.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, could I propose a couple of conditions?
Sure. Is this a motion, or is this a...
Yes.
Okay.
I move that we approve, with a couple of conditions, that the stockade fencing be priced out and presented to the board at our first meeting in September, September 1st, and, or something like that. So, the board approve a stockade fence at that time.
Yeah. I just wonder, would you be, would you be okay with some type of wording, fencing deemed appropriate by the building inspector, or do you specifically want a stockade fence?
I'm okay with, if the building inspector is, but I, I just don't see how this would be okay for that corner.
I agree with this temporary fence. I agree.
But yeah, I mean, I don't know what the building commissioner has said about this, so...
Well, neither.
So, then I guess some kind of the fencing to be approved by the building commissioner, that the project comply with any noise ordinance in town, which you should check on. I think that is the police department.
Okay.
And the acoustic guitar and one single microphone, microphone for singer alone, contingent on the fire department approval.
Okay. And Mr. Cannon, since we're issuing a temporary license, should we put a date when that license expires?
Yes.
So, should that license be September 3rd, since the gentleman's coming back at our September 2nd meeting, or do you think we should have a different?
No, I think September 3rd would be good.
Okay. Okay. So, we have a motion.
I'll second that motion, that it's, license is valid through September 3rd with the conditions listed.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Carter?
All set.
Okay. Sir, is there anything else?
That's all. Thank you.
You take a vote. Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewens says aye.
John Carter says aye.
All right. Thank you. It's unanimous. And now, we have a discussion and possible vote on an application for a Sunday license for three sips brewing.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is this, oh, for the same project?
Same.
Very good.
Discussion or a motion from the board?
Have we checked the license to make sure it complies with our specifications that Town Council gave us at our last meeting?
Yes. Thank you. Yeah. And again, you won't be bringing any applications for a license to the board until they comply with everything. So, we can, we can be sure when we see a license in front of us, that it's met all the conditions necessary.
And I'd recommend you put the same conditions on as you did the other license.
That's what I was just thinking. I was wondering if we needed to do that.
And what was the name of the other license?
Just the entertainment license. It's a special Sunday license.
Special Sunday. Okay. Yes.
Any other discussion from the board? Sir, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't.
All right. Mr. Carter, anything else?
I'm good.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion that we issue a Sunday license with the three conditions listed above for the previous license.
Okay.
And that it complies with Copman and Page's specifications for a liquor license.
And it would expire on September 3rd?
And would expire on September 3rd, correct.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewens says aye.
Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Good luck.
Thanks.
All right. At this point, we'll go back to our 6:15 agenda item, which is a request for approval of year-end transfers from the finance director, including but not limited to the following. A transfer, I'll read them one by one as we discuss them with the, with the finance director. So, the first one is a transfer from benefits to the North Carver Water District.
Good evening through you, Mr. Chair. Good evening through you, Mr. Chair. Here tonight to request FY '25 end-of-year transfers.
Sorry, I can't hear you. Speak up a little bit.
Sure. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Through, through the chair, I just mentioned that I'm here to request the FY '25 year-end transfers. The first transfer is $114,379.52 from employee benefits to the North Carver Water District's expense budget. There were meter services that were performed, that we originally planned on using ARPA funds for, and the ARPA funds are not available for this particular service, and so, we're requesting a transfer from the general fund budget to the North Carver Water District to cover this expense.
Could you give us that number one more time?
Yes, it's $114,379.52.
All right. And just to be clear, before we start discussion, I know in the past, there has been some discussion back and forth, that some monies can't be transferred to the North Carver Water District Enterprise Fund. There's no issues with making this transfer from the town to an enterprise fund, correct?
No, there are no issues. We met with the Department of Revenue and got clarification and, you know, understanding of what can be transferred. Some of the questions that came up was if we could transfer the money from the Finance Committee Reserve, and the answer was yes. And with the transfers that we're currently doing, it can come from under other available balances as part of our year-end transfer. So, that is not an issue with it going to the district.
All right, that's fine. And just before we get into discussion on this agenda item, Mr. Cannon, to you, as I understand it, this was an item that was paid through or through ARPA funds. It's just that the, the project ended up going over what we estimated for ARPA, correct?
For what we estimated for ARPA. Yeah, so, as far as I know, there's been no cost overruns on this one, but if you recall, we actually thought we had paid off the meter pit, I want to say at $350,000, somewhere in that range.
I do recall that.
And then, this invoice did come in, which I have been told that the original estimate for the, for the meter pit was more in the $500,000 range.
As I recall, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the original estimate was very wide-ranging. I think, I think there was a big range in possible costs. It was uncertain. Middleborough had gotten lots of different estimates, and I think it was a difficult one to nail down.
Correct. And if we had notification of this invoice earlier, again, we would have reserved ARPA funding to pay it off. You know, we just, we weren't aware this invoice was coming in.
Okay. And I guess, just one more question, since we paid most of this original item from ARPA, why wouldn't we just pay it ourselves? Why does the money need to be transferred to the North Carver Water District to pay it?
You know, that is a great question, Mr. Chairman. Right now, the invoice has come in to the North Carver Water District, so we want to pay it through the North Carver Water. Now, we did pay the other ones through the North Carver Water District also. They...
We did. I was unaware of that, okay.
But it gets, I think it does get into the ownership of the meter pit itself, honestly, because ultimately, the town of Carver has paid for it. I'm not really, it would be a legal question, but...
And that's an interesting question. Who owns the meter pit?
Correct.
The town, the town bought it.
So, that's my question to you. Who owns, do we know who owns the meter pit right now? The meter pit's in the town of Middleborough, correct?
No, it's...
Is it in Carver?
It's in the town of Carver. It's just over the town line.
Okay.
Yes. As far as I know, paid for by the town of Carver, so I'm going to say the town of Carver owned it, but I'm not the attorney. I'd have to bring in the attorney.
Well, it was a good question to ask our attorney.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was paid for at, by town meeting. To me, that means it's the town of Carver's, because they're our legislative body. They handle the money.
I'm not sure it was paid by, it was paid by ARPA funds, wasn't it, Mr. Cannon?
Correct. Yes, yes. Up to this point, it's been paid all by ARPA funds.
Okay. All right. Well, interesting questions. We'll go to discussion. Mr. Ryan?
So, I think I have the same question that you were just saying, is that, the, so the previous payments for the meter pit through the ARPA funds, we paid that to the district, the North Carver Water District, and then they paid Middleborough? Or did we cut checks directly to Middleborough for the previous payments for the meter pit?
So, depending on how the invoice came in, if it came in through Middleborough for North Carver Water District, then the invoice would get paid, but the revenue source would be coming from a different fund. So, it would just be paid out of a different fund. So, we have different fine codes for the ARPA funds. So, but it was, the check would still be cut to the town of Middleborough, but it would be coming out of a different source.
But we don't know how. We don't know if the town paid for it, or if the North Carver Water District...
Well, we would have had to have transferred money to the North Carver Water District for the meter pit, and I don't recall we ever did that, that they ever...
Nor do I.
So, it seems odd, back to, we should be paying Middleborough direct for this, not going through the North Carver Water District, because that's how we handled all the ARPA funds. And I don't recall ever transferring any meter money over to the North Carver Water District.
So, the, so we have, so for the ARPA funds, we had two ARPA fund codes set up, you know, one for the federal government, and so, all the revenue that come in expenses are strictly from that fund. So, it wasn't a transfer where we took funds from the ARPA funds and then moved it over to the North Carver Water District. The only reason why we're requesting the transfer now is because we, they don't have available funds. But that's, I mean, it's a good question, if you want to pay for it through, just not do the transfer and just pay for it through a budget, a line item budget here. The only problem with that is that, you know, the invoice is for services at North Carver Water District, so that's a...
May not matter.
Well, Mr. Cannon, Mr. Cannon, to you, didn't we pay for the meter pit with Plymouth County ARPA money, not federal ARPA money? Wasn't it just a Plymouth County money that we used to pay for?
Yes, Plymouth County.
Okay.
And I guess the only, I think the only point of contention would be, we'd have to request a new invoice from Middleborough, is that correct?
Yes.
Because right now, the invoice is made out...
The invoice is made out to North Carver Water District.
But if the town of Carver pays...
That we pay for. That doesn't make any sense.
It wouldn't matter. I don't think, just the town of Carver pays in the $114,379.52.
Yeah, but I think it's, I think it behooves us now that we're trying to dissolve the district, that it be very clear who pays for it.
So, are you agreeing that we, the town should pay directly to Middleborough? Okay, that's what I'm proposing also.
I agree.
And I can run it by our outside auditors, as this is an item that they would audit as they look at the invoice.
Well, I guess my, my question on this is, today's July 7th. We have to have any transfers completed by July 15th. So, if there's a question on, a legal question on how this, or where this should be paid from, is there a way of approving this transfer and authorizing the North, authorizing the town administrator to pay it from the appropriate budget? I'm concerned that we'll authorize the town to pay it, you're going to get some kind of, some kind of advice that, no, it should be paid from the North Carver Water District, and we have to come back to have another meeting to authorize that.
So, I can work that into the motion. We'll just, we'll just say we authorize the town to pay it, you know, to Middleborough and/or through the North Carver Water District, if that's what they prefer.
To me, it would be cleaner if it is transferred to the North Carver Water District. I know they have a meeting tomorrow morning to vote on the invoice. They have voted the other invoices. It would be, to me, cleaner, and how we're pressed for time right now.
All right. I'll make a motion to transfer $114,379.52 from the employee benefits budget to the North Carver Water District expense budget.
I'll second that for discussion, but I still have a couple of questions.
Let me just ask Mr. Carter. Mr. Carter, anything to add to this?
Yeah, I got a few questions. What, since everything's known now, what is the actual cost of the meter pit?
I have to look at, there were several, there were several invoices paid from North Carver for revenue. I'd have to research that and get the final total of what was paid out.
But I'm confused. How can you say you have to research it when you're asking for $114,000 to balance?
Oh, this is one, this is one invoice.
You'd have to know, you'd have to know what the cost was, what was paid to date through Plymouth ARPA, and the $114 is the delta. So, how can you not know it?
So, this is one invoice that hasn't been paid. We haven't paid this invoice. All the other invoices were paid through ARPA funds, so I'd have to look at the ARPA budget to get a total of, I didn't bring it to this meeting of what we paid, you know, in total for the meter pits, but this is just one invoice that has not been paid. We didn't have money in the budget. This particular invoice, and just to add to what Glenn was saying, in terms of having it go to North Carver Water District, was originally $116,000. $114,000 was for the meter pit, and there was like $2,000 something that had to do with water that North Carver Water District approved at their meeting and paid a portion of this invoice. So, this invoice for $114 was amended from the original $116,000 invoice.
Okay. For you, Mr. Chairman, though, I don't care about the details. I care the fact that we don't know how much the meter pit cost. I care the fact that we don't know how much was spent today, and I would need to know that to make any firm decision on this. Secondly...
Mr. Carter, if I could interrupt, I think we have an answer to your, to your question.
So, again, so at this point, Mr. Carter, we've paid $336,373 from ARPA funds for the meter pit, and then there's an additional charge here, again, of $114,379.52. I'm sorry, I, for, sort of, a grand total of $450,752.52.
Could you give us that number one more time?
So, everybody's trying to say that there's no more cost for this meter pit. This is the total cost, $450,752. Is that, is that a yes?
As far as I know, Mr. Carter, this is the total. I...
Okay. My next, my next question is, is, you know, the whole North Carver Water District is an asset. The land's an asset, the equipment's an asset, this is a meter pit, which is a late improvement, that's an asset. Why is it going to operating expenses?
Why is it going to what?
Operating expenses.
Why is it going to an asset account, not operating expenses?
Oh. Well, it says to the North Carver Water District's expenses budget...
Yeah, but it shouldn't be slot expense, it's an asset. So, we just improved an asset by $450,000. It's a late improvement, it's in the ground. Why isn't it going to the balance sheet?
So, in terms of how we do our expenses, we expense from the operating budget and the same thing, like if you have a capital project, the capital projects are expensed from the, from your, you know, expense operating budget, or your capital budget, and then the fixed assets recorded on the financial statements. So, we have a...
So, it's not lived as an item in the fixed asset section of the balance sheet?
That's correct. So, all of the capital projects that we have, everything has to be recorded through our fixed assets. And that's done on the, that's done on the balance sheet, and, excuse me, the financial statements, but the expense occurs within the operating budgets, operating and capital budgets.
So, just so I'm clear, none of this $114,379.52 is going to any operating expenses? It's all a capital asset?
That's correct, and that's how we would be noting it when we prepare the financial statement for our fixed capital assets. That's recorded at the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, I'd like to see the, the final on that, the final financials on the enterprise fund, and the fixed asset schedule when the, when the dust clears.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Ms. Hewens?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand this is going to be transferred from employees' benefits. Could I just ask for the record, who, if anyone, is suffering in their benefits for this, due to this transfer?
There's no suffering due to this transfer. All the transfers are done at the end of the fiscal year based off of available funds. So, once all of the invoices have been paid, if there are available funds in any one of the line items within our operating budget, the end-of-year transfer can be used, those available balances, to cover any shortfalls. And then, that's what this meaning would, you know, with the select board approving these transfers.
So, that was just money that had not been, was extra?
That wasn't spent. So, if we have any savings, so, you know, for employee benefits in total, employee benefits represent several categories, and within those categories, there was a savings of $257,720.22. was a savings of 257,720 and 22, based off of what was originally appropriated. So from that savings, 167,43506 is being used to cover these different transfers. That's the gross amount that we were coming from the employee benefits. Some of the transfers, you know, when you do a transfer, it could come from any department's available budget. We, I chose and worked with the, with the, with the Town Administrator to just, I thought it was clearly not coming from one line. Great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and if I could just add, we are not going to, working with Mr. Cannon, we are not going to bring an article forward that would somehow hurt our, our employees in some way.
Correct. We would not. These are, these are funds that have been left over at the end of the year, so there are no, we're taking, there's no benefits being taken away from any employee.
I, and I know that. I just wanted to make sure the public knows that.
I think that's important. Any other discussion on this particular item?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Carter.
I've got a few more questions.
Okay.
And thank you for, Sarah, for bringing that up. On the Employee Benefits, which Employee Benefit had this massive savings?
So for health insurance premiums, there was a savings of 161,568. Our original budget was 4 million, 5 million, excuse me, 423,812. We spent 5,262,243,66. We had $9,000 in savings in Social Security Medicare payments. We had $4,000 savings in unemployment. We had $5,000 savings in the Health Insurance Mitigation Administration Fee Fund. We had $7,000 available in the Call Firefighters LOSAP, and we had 59,624 available in the Plymouth County Assessment.
So what I'd like to, not now, but what we used to get, a couple of different things. One was, we used to get the actual financials as of June 30th that would show all these line items, where they stand right now, actual versus budget. Then we would get an Excel grid that would say specifically, here's the account number, I'm bringing X amount, I'm transferring from and to, so that we could actually see a summary version that ties everything out. Can we get back into getting that type of information so we can see exactly where these funds are coming from?
Mr. Carter, I'm glad you brought that up, because I was going to bring that up myself. And we, we should have more than just something that says we're transferring from one item to another. We should have a detailed breakdown of exactly what money is coming from what account to an account and...
I agree. And I actually agree with Mr. Carter. We did use to get that.
We, we did.
It may be Ms. Preval's method of doing things is a little different, but...
Sure, but as we go forward, if we could all just note, if we have transfers similar to this, we need more detail on the transfers, and we need to get those, those actual numbers.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I can send that to you first thing in the morning. I do have a spreadsheet that I use internally, and I can also send you the Expenditure Ledger Report as of June 30th. This, this report to show you the available funds, this report will not be the final 6/30 report because we're still doing journal entries, and we still have expenditures for invoices that haven't come in yet. We'll be doing carryforwards. We should have that by the end of the week. So beginning next week, we'll should have a completed expenditure ledger that I can send you showing everything that happened for the fiscal year. Also, you know, adding the school department expenses as the school department's budget is on, you know, a different financial software system. So we're doing journal entries now for the end of the year to, you know, make any corrections or if somebody coded something incorrectly. But I can give that to you first thing in the morning.
Thank you. Mr. Carter, do you have more questions?
Yeah, I just, I got one to ask. I just got one question on this. Since now everything, all the Employee Benefits, the health, the pension, is now kept above the line, and now there's this savings that you mentioned, 161,000. Isn't that for both school and Town employees?
Yes, sir. Yes, it is. Through you, through you, through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, it is.
All right. So I guess that's, I guess, so, so it wasn't needed for any of the school funds, so we, the Town, can move the money wherever we want?
That's correct.
Okay.
So I just have one more.
So through you, Mr. Chair, there are different stipulations within Mass General Law for appropriation transfers. They can, the appropriation expenditures, any available balances in the general fund cannot be transferred to cover any deficits in the school department. So if the school department had a deficit in their line, we could not move money from the general operating budgets from, that we currently have, to the school department's line item.
Thank you. Mr. Cannon?
Just a clarification, Chairman, and I apologize. Of the 336,373 dollars that was paid for out of Opera, for the Plymouth County Opera, 1,012,40 was paid out of the federal portion of that. I...
Okay, so it was a mix of federal and Plymouth County.
Yeah, a thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Hewens?
So I just have a question. I don't know if anyone else would benefit from the answer, but I'm just curious why we had leftover money in healthcare, because it's usually, I don't think we usually do, do we? I think that's a big expense, so...
We've had available, through you, Mr. Chair, we've had available funds in this line, in this line item last year as well, and we did transfers from, usually at the end of the fiscal year, I'll be going through, you know, each month to see where there were savings, to be able to provide, you know, information on why we had savings in the different department. And so that is a process that I do towards the end of the year as we close out the books. And as we go into the next fiscal year, you know, just analyzing, you know, did we have less claims? You know, was, did we, you know, we have very conservative projections as we're projecting money, so not to run a deficit. So those are things that we examine and then use, you know, moving forward into the next fiscal year.
No, that's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, it's good to know.
I guess before we move forward, I just have one more question on this, on this bill. So when did this bill come in from the Town of Middleborough?
This bill actually has been around the Town Hall for a while. We tried to pay it out of different sources. We finally decided to wait till the end of the year with the year-end transfers, because the North Carver Water District didn't have the funding, and neither did the Town have funding in any of our...
But was it a month, three months, six months? Any idea?
I want to say it came in even in April.
Okay. So why didn't we go to the Finance Committee and ask them for a, a transfer so we could get the bill paid back then?
Again, we were hoping that we'd be able to pay it out of one of the departments, but we were not able to do that.
Okay. I just hate to see, Middleborough has been so helpful to us through this whole process.
And I have had discussions with Jay McGrath about this.
So they were aware of it?
They were aware of this, and they, they know the struggles we had. I, I think they understood too that we didn't budget properly for the original meter pit, and this bill came as a surprise to us.
Okay.
They were very sympathetic to that.
All right. Ms. Hewens, did you have another?
No, no. Thank you. I'm all set. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Carter? Hi, Mr. Carter, I can't hear you.
I guess that's really, it's really not related to the expense, but somehow, I was on the Finance Committee for 12 years. The Finance Committee funds were used for an unplanned, unexpected expense, such as this meter pit. Now it's somehow morphed to let's not spend any of it, and let's leave it until the end of the year so we can use it to balance funds. I'm pretty sure that, yes, it's not supposed to be used that way. It can be, but I believe it's designed for unexpected expenses. And then if you have money left over, you can use it to balance, but not to sit here and say, I'm going to save this because I need to balance my books to the end of the year. I mean, I'm interested, Dan, that you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, well, and just to maybe just add, as, as a former Vice Chairman of the Finance Committee, I agree with Mr. Carter. I mean, that was, this is not the purpose of the Finance Committee Reserve Fund. The purpose is to cover unexpected expenses that come up during the year and not just keep it all to the end and balance the budget. So, I'm sorry, does anyone else have a comment on that, or?
I agree.
Joe?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct. Finance Committee Reserve Funds can be used to transfer unforeseen expenses that come up throughout the year. This invoice, this amount, the 114, could have been approved by the Finance Committee. They selected to transfer money for unforeseen expenses for legal accounting and the Board of Health. But yes, as you're, that is correct. The Finance Committee Reserve Fund is not something that is just like slush money that we just, you know, set aside and then use at the end of the fiscal year just to balance a budget. But it's for unforeseen things that came up, as expenses that hit the, hit the Town.
So the Finance Committee did that themselves. Is that what you're saying?
The Finance Committee selected, so the Finance Committee was provided with shortfalls that we had, you know, that were unforeseen, and selected to choose to transfer funds for legal, border health, and accounting.
That's right. Currently, at the last Finance Committee meeting.
That's correct.
They did that. But there's no reason that we couldn't have gone to the Finance Committee three months ago or four months ago or whenever and asked for this transfer to pay the bill.
That's correct. Through you, Mr. Chair. So the Finance, so for the Finance Committee, transfers can be done during the year for unforeseen items that come up. A lot of times they're done at the end of the fiscal year. If they weren't originally budgeted during the original budget, when you have your, you know, that goes through Town Meeting.
Mr. Ryan?
No, I agree. So maybe going forward, we just got to make sure that if these unforeseen expenses come in, that the Finance Committee is, you know, working with the Finance Committee to pay them so that we don't wait till the end of the year.
And again, with the only caveat is we do try to pay these out of department budgets first. So we just don't want, you know, we just want to see a live bill and go to the Finance Committee. If we could pay it out of the department, we, we choose that first.
I think one thing important to note, note though, and, and you may not be aware of this because you were not the Town Administrator at the time, but a couple of years ago, we did increase the Finance Committee Reserve Fund by, I think, $50,000. I think we went from 125 to 175. Ms. Preval, you may have that number in front of you, but we did that specifically to, to deal with this kind of thing that come up, came up during, during the year, so they would have the money for that. Mr. Carter, I'm sorry, you, do, do you have a comment?
No, I'm saying you're correct. It went from 125 to 175.
Okay. Mr. Ryan?
So I, I did make the motion. It was seconded to, you know, to give this, put this money into the North Carver Water District Expense Budget with the, I guess, expectation that it's going to be paid tomorrow. You're saying the meeting...
The North Carver Water District is going to vote on it tomorrow, then we'll pay the bill.
Okay. That's the expectation. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I guess one final question, and I can't anticipate this happening, but if the North Carver Water District were to vote not to pay the bill...
That's why I just said that, asked that question.
Would we have to come back?
We would have to come back.
Okay. So can you, can you let us know when they take that vote?
Yes, yes, I will.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any, any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewens says aye.
Mr. Carter?
Ron Carter says aye.
All right. Thank you. The next item is a transfer from benefits to utilities.
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair, we're requesting $25,000 transfer from, we had unforeseen costs due to increased prices in gas and oil heating, and we're requesting, which, we're requesting $25,000 to be transferred from the Employee Benefits to Utilities Expense Budget. A lot of the, the shortfalls in the Utilities line came from gasoline and oil heating.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I'll make a motion to transfer...
Yes, I got a question.
Why don't we let Mr. Ryan make his motion, and then we'll go to discussion. All right.
I'll make a motion to transfer 25,000 from the Employee Benefits Budget to the Utilities Expense Budget.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Discussion, Mr. Carter?
I guess my first question, if we're, if we're, if we're, the deficit of 25,000, what was the, what was the budget number for fiscal 2025?
So the budget for utilities was 394,800. Right now, we have a deficit of 4,940, and they also have additional, additional bills that are going to be encumbered for invoices that we haven't received yet.
And what was the, and what was the actual for fiscal '24?
I would have, I'd have to look that up, and I could provide that to you. I don't have that number in front of me.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
I was going to ask, did we actually cut that budget going into Town Meeting? I know sometimes we were cutting a few, but was that one actually dropped? Does anybody recall?
I don't recall, Dan. I...
All right. We may have cut that one also. Not anticipating there'd be an increase in the, in the gas and oil.
You know, you could very well be right, because if I recall, the price of gasoline went down for a couple of years, right? To $2,000, $2 a gallon. It might have had a, you know, a surplus the last couple of years. You could be correct.
It was pretty high for a while, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I believe that when I was working with O&M, we were looking at, would you like some water?
Oh, I have some. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Through you, excuse me, you know, working with O&M, we were looking at, you know, the prior last, you know, three years in terms of expenses as we developed FY '25 budget. And with the increased cost, we didn't know that, you know, for gasoline, you know, we're over $33,000 more than we had originally anticipated, which was a lot higher than previous years. But that's something, you know, as, you know, we move into, as I close out FY '26, I'll be going back and looking at, and then being a share with the Select Board and the Finance Committee, you know, what happened in FY '25 based off of what we budgeted, what was expensed in some of the unforeseen things that had come up, or if there were any savings, why we had those savings.
Okay. Anything else? All right. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewens says aye.
Mr. Carter?
Ron Carter says aye.
All right. It is unanimous. Thank you. Next is a transfer from benefits to debt service.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. The Town issued bonds for the library and Town Hall roof project. We were, we're expecting a deficit. We, well, we have a, we're projecting a deficit, which we currently have in the debt service expense line in the amount of 28,055.4 cents. This covered the first interest payment that was due on June 25th. We're requesting a transfer of 28,055.4 from the Employee, the Employees' Benefits Budget to the maturing debt expense budget. This, when we prepared the budget for FY '25, we were paying off a ban for this particular project, and at the time, we didn't, that this budget went to print in June, did not have information in terms of us going to bond market after we met with Stan and Simpor in the fall, looking at this project and when it was going to be expensed, because it was cheaper for the Town to go to bond these projects as they were going to be pleaded within two years than to issue another ban for interest for projects that were done.
All right. Any questions from the board? Nope?
Yeah. We typically have a short-term interest line item in the budget. What was budgeted for fiscal 2025?
For the short-term interest, that covered the ban, and it also covered the issuance fees. So we have that money in the budget. There's $120,000 that we budget, and that money is set aside every year to cover any ban fees. We have different fees if we were to issue debt, if we were to go to bond, if we were to issue debt. And so that money to cover those fees from the bond issue were paid out of the $120,000 budgeted line item.
No, I know. That's what the short-term means is for these ban payments. But, but, so you're saying we went 140, whatever, 140,000, 28,000 in actual for fiscal '25?
We went over, that's correct. So for the interest, we paid, so for the, the $120,000, this was your interest on your temporary loans, was 18,392,25. So that paid off the ban, and it paid the issuance cost for when we did the bond issue.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mr. Ryan?
I'll make a motion to transfer 28,055.54 from the Employee Benefits Budget to the mature debt expense budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewens says aye.
Mr. Carter?
Ron Carter says aye.
All right. It is unanimous. Thank you. Next is a transfer from the Fire Department Salary to Fire Department Expenses.
Through you, Mr. Chair, the Fire Department is requesting a transfer of 4,500 to cover the purchase of replacing the brush breaker tires. This purchase would have caused a deficit in their operating budget by 4,500. And so we're asking a transfer from their salary line of 4,500 to the expense line to cover this purchase. Their current, excuse me. They currently had a savings of $43,000 in their...
Salary budget.
$45,000 in their salary line, in requesting 45 to cover these tires. It's an emergency. This is something that was unforeseen and to have for the department for this.
I'll make a motion to transfer 4,500 from the fire salary budget to the fire expense budget to cover the purchase of the, replacing the brush breaker tires.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Anyone? Mr. Carter?
Nope.
Everyone good?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewens says aye. Sarah Hewn says aye.
John Carter says aye.
All right, thank you, it is unanimous. Next is a transfer from EMS salary to EMS expenses.
Through you, Mr. Chair, the Emergency Management Service incurred unexpected expenditures for their preventive maintenance and repairs for biomedical and transfer equipment, and they're requesting $4,582.22 from their EMS salary budget line to the EMS expense budget. For the EMS, they had a savings of $15,203.54 in their salary, and they're requesting this transfer, and their budget is paid for strictly by the revenue that we bring in through the ambulance fees.
So I'll make a motion to transfer the sum of $4,582.22 from the EMS salary budget to the EMS expense budget to cover the unexpected expenses for preventive maintenance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Anyone? Mr. Carter?
Nope.
Everyone good?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye?
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Mr. Carter?
Carter says aye.
All right, great, thank you. Next is a transfer from IT expenses to IT salary.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we're requesting a transfer of $202.80 from the Information Technology expense budget to the Information Technology salary budget. This was not an increase in the IT, this is for the data, well, the IT director, his salary is 80,243.80, and there was a mistake with the budget of 80,41. It was oversight, and so, so we're able to make up that difference from the expense budget, and so this is why I put this transfer in.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion to transfer $202.80 from the Information Technology Department expense budget to the Information Technology Department salary budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye?
Sarah Hewn says aye.
John Carter says aye.
All right, great, thank you. Next is a transfer from election registration to town clerk salaries stipends.
Through you, Mr. Chair, requesting a $1,000 transfer stipend, this is for the town clerk's certified Massachusetts Municipal Clerk's stipend, that the town clerk receives it for $1,000. This was not in the FY '25 budget, and so I'm requesting a transfer in the amount of $1,000 from the Elections and Registration salary budget to the town clerk's salary wages for the $1,000 that she's entitled to for this particular stipend.
All right.
Okay, I'll make a motion to transfer $1,000 from the Elections and Registration salary budget to the town clerk salary budget.
I'll second that, but I have a question.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Hewn?
I'm just wondering why, if there's a stipend, it wasn't requested last year?
It wasn't in FY '25 budget as we were going through. I was not aware of the stipend, but legal, by law, she's entitled to the stipend that I was aware of, and it was not in the original budget. We have included it in the FY '26 budget moving forward, but was not aware of the stipend that she was required to get.
So it sounds like the town clerk wasn't aware of it either?
I believe she was, but I'm not sure why it wasn't in the budget.
She did bring it to our attention after the budget had been passed, so just recently.
Thanks, Ms. Praval.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Mr. Carter? Anything?
Nope.
All right, I believe we have a motion and a second. Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye?
Sarah Hewn says aye.
John Carter says aye.
All right, great, thank you. Next is a transfer from planning to inspections.
Through you, Mr. Chair, due to unforeseen costs and overtime, and this is in response to electrical work that our town electrician has done at 31R Main Street, which is the location of the battery storage facility, they're projecting a deficit in their salary budget of 1,135.28. This amount is for overtime, and so for this particular department, for elect, excuse me, for electrical work, it's just their regular salary. So that 1,135.28 will cover overtime work. The town also hired weights and measures part-time staff that was not originally budgeted, and in addition to that, there were additional operating supplies that the weights and measures position also required. So we're projecting a deficit in the inspection salary in the amount of 3,098.04, and in expenses, 1,071.73. So the total amount that we're requesting is 6,835.05 be transferred from the Planning Board expense budget to cover this shortfall.
Okay.
So I'm going to do them individually because they're going in, so, but I didn't get that last number, but let me start at least with the first one. So I'll make a motion to transfer 1,135.28 from the Planning Board expense budget into the electrical salary budget to cover overtime work. That's the first one.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Anyone?
Yeah, a quick question. How come this isn't coming out of the funds that we have in escrow from the battery storage people?
Mr. Cannon?
I don't, I don't believe it is an escrow account. I believe the funds just went into the general fund, and then we're paying for his salary out of the general fund. Ms. Praval?
That's correct. His salary is just part of, his salary is just part of the general operating budget, and so we did not pay for that overtime work that they did out of any other, out of their, any other expense line that was approved by town meeting.
I guess I'm still confused. The battery storage people gave us basically kilowatt-hours in a multiple for 150 kilowatts, it's a sum of money sitting somewhere over in our bank account. Why wouldn't this be drawn out against that?
So for our revenue, we have revenue sources that make up the revenue that go into different funds, but the expenses always hit the expense budget, so we wouldn't do a credit to the revenue for expenses that occurred through his salary, because all the salary expenses are paid out of a particular account. If we wanted to cover expenses from a different revenue source, they would have to go to town meeting to cover that revenue source. But as this is paid for out of our operating budget, it qualifies under expense transfers from the operating accounts.
So if I could, Mr. Carter, the, the electrical permit fee from Cranberry Point, when it just went into the general fund, that's all, there's not a separate account with that funding sitting in it?
Right.
Okay.
I guess, I've got more questions, but I'll follow up with the finance director.
All right, thank you. Everybody else good? Okay, Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye?
Sarah Hewn says aye.
John Carter says aye.
All right, thank you. Next is transfer from planning to electrical.
So, so that's, I'll make a motion to transfer 3,988.04. Am I correct, Ms. Praval?
That's correct, that's from inspections.
From the Planning Board expense into the inspection salary budget.
That's correct, through you, Mr. Chair, that's correct, and that is covering the weights and measures salary that was originally not budgeted, and that person was working part-time, and that position has been included in the FY '26 budget.
Thank you. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
So we are taking a total of $6,835.05 from the Planning Board expense, and they've got the capacity to cover that, I'm assuming, but just wanted, it seems like a lot, 6,835.
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct. So the Planning Board had savings in their expense line for around $12,000, and working with Mr. Bott, and looking at, you know, the division of these different departments, we had the money to cover these different shortfalls, and these are things that, you know, we review on a monthly basis. So he was aware that, you know, some of these other different divisions with, that fall under his umbrella, had shortfalls due to these additional expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, if I could, Ms. Praval, and I don't have this one memorized, so this was formerly a consultant. Was that consultant line item in the Planning Board's budget?
I'm not sure, I'd have to look into that.
All right, so there was a consultant that, I think, actually retired, I believe, a town aware him employee, but we hired him as a consultant. I want to say they retired mid-year, and then we had to hire our own guy, and then, and actually get him the tools to do the weights and measures to do, you know, but, but again, some, some savings here, if there was $12,000 in the budget for the consultant, which is, I think what I'm hearing, you know, we're getting this done for $7,000.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye?
Sarah Hewn says aye.
John Carter says aye.
All right, great, thank you. The next three transfers come...
Oh, and then I, I still need the, Ms. Praval, to give me the amount for the inspections expense that we want to transfer, because it's different than what I have here.
Through you, Mr. Chair, the amount of money that we're requesting for the inspection expense budget is 1,711.73.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to transfer 1,711.73 from the Planning Board expense budget into the inspection expense budget.
That's correct.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye?
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
All right, great, thank you. The next three transfers we're going to discuss, Mr. Cannon, have these already happened from the Finance Committee?
These have happened from the Finance Committee. It is our interpretation of the guidance from Department of Revenue that they also need to be voted by the Select Board. It does say "and."
Okay, all right, you're not, you're not just looking for, for our opinion, you're looking for an actual vote on these transfers.
Looking for an actual vote, yes.
So the first transfer I see is from legal, and I know there's going to be a lot of questions on this, so why don't I just turn it over to you to give us some background on why, where we at?
Sure, so, so we have had significant overages in the, in the legal budget. I'll tell you, it is my understanding that we've had this in years past. I think we probably need to do a harder exam of the legal budget. Some of this even comes from, if you will, this two parts of the legal budget. There's the typical town council, which runs somewhere in the, across a $15,000 a month. So again, I think we have to look at that. With this year, we, recently, we've also had labor councils separately. They've been helping us on some significant internal investigations that we've conducted, as well as we had four union negotiations, and then two employee contracts to negotiate also this year. So that's an added expense that, quite honestly, I wasn't budgeted properly in fiscal year '25. We really should have anticipated, you know, it's a heavy load coming in, so...
So when there's some type of internal investigation or something of that matter, there's really no way of us anticipating that?
Correct.
That's always going to be unanticipated, but we did know that there were, but there were union negotiations coming up. So I think that's a, that's a change from previous town administrators, that you, you've decided that you want to have our legal counsel there for those negotiations.
Yes, yes, it was very helpful this year, having them in there. I believe we've made significant progress on those contracts, both protecting the town and the employees. You know, it's the wording of these things that they change by the hour, the legal interpretation of some of the rules we have, especially with grievances, and then employee rights also. We, I know one of the debates we had about is, you know, who is your immediate family? These days, families have grown in such a significant way, you know, it is, it is multiple stepparents and multiple step-grandparents, so there can be multiple people in your immediate family that weren't quite around a few years ago.
Sure. Ms. Praval, do you know what was the legal budget that we voted?
The legal budget that was voted was $140,000. Currently, we've spent $217,382, and there's a, you know, we've had, I mean, there's a shortfall of 77, but to my understanding, there's some other invoices that haven't been paid for services through June 30th.
And how much, Mr. Cannon, to you, or to you, Ms. Praval, whoever think, whoever might have the answer, how much have we paid to KP Law?
I, I can provide a detailed report of the vendors that we paid. I do not have that with me, a detailed report. I can, I can run a report for that.
So, Mr., Mr. Chair, so on the next page, the expense, total expense to date, it separates the labor from KP Law?
Yeah, I just didn't know if that, if there was anything else inside from that, or?
With the total that we spent, yeah, so that's the, in addition, I think. That, that number 45 is in addition to what we've already paid.
Correct, so right now, the paid to KP Law would be 93,556.60.
Give it to me one more time.
It's on your, on your sheet.
Sorry, 90, 93,556.60.
Right, but there's nothing else. Is there anything else in addition to that?
We're anticipating $45,000 more.
On top of that, okay.
And the labor law was 65,733.75.
Right. I'm just getting that, that 138 just about matches what we budgeted for legal, but we, obviously, it's a change in policy to have, have counsel at union negotiations. We couldn't have, that's something that going forward, we can budget for, and as far as whatever internal things come up, you can't budget.
Correct, and it's the anticipation, so, you know, union negotiations only happen every three years. These two employee contracts happen to be every five, you know, five-year contract, so they wouldn't come up for, you know, five additional years, or additional years.
Okay. Okay, questions from the board? Mr. Ryan?
And there was also an assessing, was that, is that a normal? The assessing legal was 21,577. Is that typical in a year, or is that unforeseen?
That was all the solar projects, as well as the battery?
Yeah. So that may have been unforeseen?
That was unfore, yeah, because there had been things done wrong in a previous administration.
Okay.
Mr. Cannon?
Yeah, I don't have the assessing values from previous years, Mr. Ryan, I have to research that. But I do know there were a number of pilot agreements this year that were negotiated.
Okay, I think we spent, I think we spent a lot of time working on that pilot agreement too, for Cranberry Point.
Right.
That's taken.
And also, if I may, Mr. Chair, there were a number of solar projects, the income from which was not being dispersed properly, and that took some time to unravel. That was all from a previous administration, previous finance, finance director.
That was brought to us last year, though, so we could have anticipated some of that, but...
Anyway, there was also the change in the 61A law, if you remember the assessing legal council came in. Honestly, I'd have to review all the details of that, but it was about, you know, holding that property in 61A, and the timing of getting it out, and, you know, again, I think that took more review than normal.
Yeah, there were a lot of unanticipated things that I think are probably, hopefully, one-time items that won't be, won't be recurring. Mr. Carter, do you have anything on this?
Yeah, I'm, a couple of, a couple of things. One is, before we go into this detail, I've said this, and I put on the town administrator's goals, is that, you know, we need to see financials on a regular basis, at least I do at least, that, that, I'll be the point now, we're sending out monthly financials, all cost center financials by department, showing legal fees, things of that nature, some kind of revenue report, that whatever the Finance Committee is getting on a monthly basis, I'd like to see, and if there's, probably each quarter, you should be, maybe the Finance Director should be coming to us and saying, this is what I'm seeing for potential issues, actual versus budget, just so we're not finding out at the end of the year, we got a $110,000 legal adjustment to make.
And I agree 100% on that point, just, and I'll let you continue, but I do want you to know, and I think we've discussed this before in this room, but if we haven't, the, the town administrator, and I have discussed, having the Finance Director come in for state of the budget reports on a, on a semi-regular basis. I think the town administrator, correct me if I'm wrong, has scheduled the first one for early October, is that correct?
Yes, we were identifying October for the first one.
Yeah, so that will be happening, Mr. Carter.
So whatever's going out monthly, I'd like to see, just put me on your attachment. And then we're looking at $254,000 for legal costs on a budget of 140. I know we started talking about a lot of these things that were one-timers, but to the town administrator, through you, Mr. Chairman, can we just get a summary? This is what the 140 included? You know, I'm not looking for like 700 line items, you know, general legal, you know, labor negotiations, whatever's included in that 140, and then the same caption, what were the actuals, just, just rough numbers, I don't need to see every single nickel and dime. And my last question is, in this legal budget that we're talking about this variance, is just, is this just a board of selectmen, or are there planning board legal fees in this, and conservation legal fees in this?
There would be both planning board and conservation legal fees in this. I know planning board, you know, Earth Removal Committee would be in this with town council. And, and, Mr. Carter, I can get you a breakdown, you know, we can summarize it into, you know, town council, labor, even probably lawsuits, really, you know, to general categories, though. You know, even policy for the town, you know, we have labor council help us write policies, again, very detailed, and then the investigations, and, you know, probably the larger categories.
Yeah, we've had a lot, we've had a lot. We've had, you know, the whole MBTA community... Yeah, we've had a lot, we've had a lot. We've had, you know, the whole MBTA Communities Act. There's been a lot of things that we've had to have legal for that we couldn't have anticipated, that wouldn't, weren't, don't happen every year. But, Mr. Carter, we'll get you as detailed of a breakdown as you need.
And one last question. What were the legal fees cost for fiscal 2024?
I would have to, I would have to, I don't have that with me. I can run that and provide that to you.
We'll get you for that.
Thank you.
All right.
Just, through you, Mr. Chair, I just want to make note that I, you know, have been sending out monthly reports to the Select Board members and to the Finance Committee each month, showing the balance of what's been spent, along with revenue reports, showing, you know, detailed revenue in terms of what has come in. With the revenue reports, a lot of things are changing, but at the end of the fiscal year, you're not going to see the revenue coming in monthly, depending on how, when it's been booked and recorded. You know, a lot of the revenue that comes in goes to the banks, and until it's been actually booked on the books, you're not going to see those totals. So, those reports have been submitted each month. I mean, if there's additional information, you know, in terms like you were mentioning, quarterly updates, where we can look at where we are first, first part of the quarter, but these are things that I work and I sit with the departments every quarter. I meet with them. I have emails that, you know, provide them, even though they have access to run these reports. I provide the reports to the department heads, and I meet with them on a quarterly basis over this last fiscal year, going over their budgets and where they are, how much they've been, how much is spent each quarter, so that, you know, we're not running a deficit. Or, as things come up, I'm aware of something that may be, you know, that may hurt them later. But I have been having meetings with departments and sending these reports, and which I'll continue to do. The report for June has not been submitted just due to the end of the fiscal year, and a lot of the expenses haven't hit the budget because we have it split for how we do our vendor warrants at the end of the year. So this Thursday, we'll have the final warrant for FY '25, so you're not going to see that on your expense reports.
Okay. Anything else on this? Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, just a, well, it's probably not a quick question, who knows. So you're showing the total expenses to date of $180,867.85, I guess if I read that. So out of $140,000 budget that we had put in there, so it says expenses to date is 180. So that parts the over 40, but then you're asking for an additional 110. So, does that mean that some of those expenses haven't been paid and that's included in the 110?
No, for the legal budget, the budget was $140,000.
Correct.
As of today, we spent 217,382.71. That does not include the additional invoices that are going to hit this Thursday because we haven't made the final payments for FY ' '25. These are things where, you know, looking at reports in terms of what we have to spend. Most of the, I don't see all of the invoices from the departments, so when I reach out to departments, you know, asking them, you know, where they see themselves in the deficit, they know how much money is left in the budget, and they provide a number based off of invoices they know are coming up, but I don't see, I don't get a copy of those invoices. So right now, there's a shortfall of $77,000 in that budget. And so when you do the transfer of the, you know, 110, then that balance will be used for invoices through June 30th that the department has reviewed.
Okay.
So I get this information from the departments based off of what they're spending, what invoices they have left or that haven't been paid, so that we have enough money when the invoices are paid to cover that.
And so when we were showing the $65,000 for Clifford and Kenny and the $45,000 for KP Law, is that beyond, or is that included in part of the money? I was trying to understand what that 65 and 45 meant.
I don't know what you're, I'm not sure what copy you're looking at. That would have come from the departments that manage the legal department, the legal expenses for this. So I'm not sure what you're looking at.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
Oh, so I was just trying to do the math to see, so I see that in the sheet that we have, it says total expenses to date. Those add up to $180,867, and then Ms. Praval's saying, we're really, we're in a deficit of 217,382, which is 77, 77,382. But then there's another line item that shows $65,000 for Clifford and Kenny and $45 for KPR. I was just trying to understand how that balances into all these numbers because, you know, doing the math, it sounds like you're higher, you have more of a shortfall if that's the overage on those accounts. So I didn't see this adding up. That's what I was trying to run the numbers here, but maybe you can show that after.
Yeah, the invoices do lag behind, and that's all. So, but we are confident right now, if it is voted at 210, I mean, $250,500, that will cover all the legal expenses. So right now, we have $217,000, I didn't get the rough, the exact number, and then we are anticipating bills coming in for June.
So of $140,000, we're $250,000.
So, Mr. Ryan, if you look at the dates of these bills, the one up top for KP Law is April through June, down bottom, general, it's July through March. So they're different time periods too.
And the bills just lag behind. Honestly, believe it or not, we have to chase them for the bills.
So.
They'll come eventually, believe me.
They do come, and we try to get them paid within the fiscal year, so we do try to chase them.
And Ms. Hewens, that was my question. I added those total expenses to date to get to 180, and then I added the 110 on top of that, and that gets me to 291, not 250. That's where I was trying to understand the math there, because if you take the 180 that's shown expenses to date, and you add the 110 on top of that, you get a number of, you know, that's 291. So that's where I was trying to do the math there. But I guess we can, maybe if you can put a report together after that shows, you know, what, just so we're sure that they're contained to the 250, which of course, it seems like much higher and probably should try to understand a little bit more of that.
I do think we should do a thorough review of the legal budget, look at previous years and see where we stand.
That's right. And then if I understood correctly, sorry, another question is with Clifford and Kenny, you brought up the, you know, we needed them for the contracts, but I think the total for the contracts was about $18,000?
Correct.
So that's, even though that's more than expected, it's not, it's not adding up to the total of the two.
Well, there were other internal things.
Internal things, and then we ask them for policy help too. Again, you know, maternity policies these days, pregnancy policies, again, things that are changing every day with the court system that you really need to be right on top of, so.
Okay.
It isn't the old cut and paste from somebody else's policy that you can do these days.
Anything else on this line item? If not, is there a motion?
So I guess the question on the motion is, given the Finance Committee already approved taking this money from their reserve fund to the Select Board Legal Services, are we voting to also approve it? What's our, what is our motion? Do we also approve?
Can it be a motion just to, I'm sorry, just to simply affirm the Finance Committee's vote, or do you need a specific?
What's the wording of the motion?
I prefer the 110,500 if you'd make that motion. I believe, you know, it's pretty much the same motion the Finance Committee made, but.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of 110,500 from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund to the Select Board Legal Services expense budget.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have one comment, and that goes back to, I mean, Karen and I talked about this before, for, you know, for 10, 12 years, the Finance Committee would approve transfers during the year, and they were done. At the end of the year, if there was $50,000 left in the account, then it would go to the Select Board for year-end transfers. I believe I asked you about this, Karen, and I think you sent me some documentation on it. I read it, and it still doesn't read like the Select Board has to sign off on everything the Finance Committee does. So I'd like to redo that again after this meeting with you because it just seems to be redundant, and I just question the need for it. But if you could send me over the master general law again, I'll schedule some time to come in and talk to him.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I think it's better safe than sorry.
Well, so I agree. I agree, Ms. Hewens, but I also agree with Mr. Carter. I was on the Finance Committee for a long time. We made transfers. I don't think we ever had to send them to the Select Board to be, to be approved. Otherwise, what's the purpose of having the Finance Committee do the transfers in the first place? They may as well just advise, recommend that we do a transfer. So, I do think that we need to research this a little bit and get some, get some guidance, because I don't believe that we, when the Finance Committee pays a bill during the course of the year, we don't do that. So I just think we need to get some guidance on that, whether, whether we need to do this or we're just affirming what the Finance Committee.
There, sorry, legal bill again.
It did say "and," so it's Select Board and the Finance Committee.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I mean, I have the, I have the master general law here. It's under Chapter 4433B, and I'll just, I'll just read it for, it says for appropriation transfers. And this was, I mean, they, sometimes we get letters from DL, Department of Local Services, if there are any changes in the municipal financial law. But it states that during May and June, and in the first 15 days of July of the new fiscal year, the Select Board, with the agreement of the Finance Committee, may transfer any portion from department or other appropriations to other, to, in other appropriations. This procedure may not be used, however, to transfer funds from a municipal light or school department budget. An end-of-the-year transfer using this alternative procedure requires a majority vote of the Select Board and a majority vote of the Finance Committee. The end-of-the-year transfer from the municipal light or school department may require a different town meeting approval. So from that language stating that the end-of-the-year transfer using this procedure requires a majority vote of the Select Board and a majority vote of the Finance Committee is why we brought it and added it to this agenda.
Makes sense to me. If you could, could you just, after the meeting, send a link, over the next couple of days, send a link to the Select Board to that? Yeah, Mr. Ryan?
So what I just heard that you said it was a timeframe, May, so if it was done prior to May, that means the.
I think she said May, June.
So the end-of-the-year transfers can be May, June, they're usually done May and June in the first 15 days of July.
So what I'm asking is that the Finance Committee outside of that period can transfer anytime they want, unexpected, and we do not have to weigh in on it. It's only during that period of at the end of the fiscal year, May, June, and July, that we need to do.
That's correct, but she's answering Mr. Carter and Mr. Townsend's question about why we have to vote on.
Right.
But that could be the reason why it didn't come in front of the Select Board before, if the transfer may earlier.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. Since we were on the Finance Committee for years, we never had to do that, but usually we probably spent all the money before we got to that point.
I think, I think, I think you're right. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Yep, I'm sorry, Ms. Praval?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So there's two different statutes. There's a statute for the end appropriation transfers, where you're moving money from what was originally voted at town meeting, and there's a statute on how you, what you can do with the finance reserve funds. So if the Finance Reserve Committee decided that in October, and I went and I said, you know, we have a shortfall, it's unforeseen, we want to transfer money, they can do that at that time. And that would then still be on this letter that is done at the end of the year because I've moved money from one appropriation to another. So you'd still see it, but it would have been done from the Finance Committee earlier in the fiscal year.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, it's been a while. We do have a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewens says aye.
Mr. Carter?
Mr. Carter says aye.
All right, it is unanimous. Thank you. And next is a transfer from Finance Committee Reserve Fund to Accounting.
Through you, Mr. Chair, this, there was, the Finance Committee transferred money to the Board of Health, and this was for?
I think this is, is number three on the list, the 41,000 from the Finance Reserve Fund. That's next up on our list here, so.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The agenda's a little bit different than the memo.
I'm sorry, I was looking at, so the 41,000, we requested 41,000 from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund to cover unforeseen expenses in the accounting budget. One was $3,000 in the accounting expense line, and that, that covered overtime for our assistant accountant for work that was done during the FY '24 budget, along with, we had a couple of part-time summer interns that came in over the last couple of months to help while we were short in our department when our treasurer was owed on a family medical leave. And also, we were transferring $38,000 that were for unforeseen costs for Standards and Poor. There was $15,000 from Standards and Poor that was unforeseen, that was originally not in the FY '25 budget, based off of what was budgeted under other professional services. And then there was consulting work that was done through GGS Consulting when George was assisting the town, along with consulting work with Eric Kinshoff that was assisting the accounting department, in the finance department, were trying to balance the bank to cash and CASG L as we transitioned into the new software and with the FY '24 budget.
All right. I'll do this as two motions again. So I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of $3,000 from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund to the accounting salary budget.
All right, we have a motion, sir.
Second.
All right, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye?
Sarah Hewens says aye.
Mr. Carter says aye.
All right, thank you.
And I'll make a motion to transfer the sum of $38,000 from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund to the accounting expense budget.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none.
Yeah, I've got a question.
Yes, Mr. Carter?
I've got a question. You said it's unforeseen, but what is it?
So we had, we had $15,000. So the budget for the finance department was set based off of previous budgets, so we had $69,100 that was budgeted under other professional services. And that covers money that we have to pay towards Markham's, who is our outside auditors. So there's still invoices that we haven't received right now. So out of that line item, we've spent 60, out of a $69,000 budget, we spent $60,000. We went over in our seminar training budget of $3,000. There was additional training that we had for myself and for my staff when I came in. And so from those, you know, looking at the total overall budget for the expenses, $60,000 was paid out to cover Markham's. We still have the remaining Markham's invoice for the FY, the FY '25 audit that they haven't billed us for. And we would need to have additional funds to cover that because when this budget was put together, we hadn't anticipated the additional work that was going to be covering and the expenses that were covered at the end of the close of fiscal year.
It says $38,000 to cover unforeseen expenses to Standard and Poor's, not Markham's. What is the, what was the issue with Standard and Poor's that caused the $38,000 over?
So it's a combination. The 38 is a total, so $15,000 of the, $15,000 at 38 was not projected, and that was when we went to issue bonds. We had to use Standards and Poor's to do a whole evaluation. So that evaluation on the town's finances, it was $15,000 that was originally, wasn't in the budget for this particular budget. A lot of the, for, and then we had, so when you're looking at the accounting, other professional services, this line item mainly covers our outside auditors and, you know, other financial obligations that we're required to pay for DESI Financial Reporting Services. So this budget line was set up and has been consistent with prior budgets that we've had in the past. So these additional costs for the GGS Consulting and, and a lot of the expenses from Eric Kinshoff is causing this budget to go over by $38,000. And those were funds that were anticipated going into this budget because we didn't know at the time that we were going to need this amount of assistance based off of a lot of the work that wasn't done for the entire year due to there being, you know, lack of a finance director.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Anything else? Seeing none.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye?
Sarah Hewens says aye.
Mr. Carter?
Mr. Carter says aye.
All right, thank you. It is unanimous. And finally, we have the transfer from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund to the Board of Health.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we're transferring $16,500 and from, this was from the Finance Reserve to the Board of Health for well-replacement services. It was a mandate that was issued by DEP for 99 Main Street that was unforeseen. And, you know, we met with the finance, the Chair of the Finance Committee and with the Board of Health Director when we found out this invoice came in that they needed to have paid.
Okay, so I guess the only question I have on this is, when did we get the invoice?
This was just recently, probably within the, probably in the last month I was aware, I was told of this.
Fine, thank you.
And the mandate came in.
If I could, Ms. Chairman, I believe the mandate came in sometime in April, and I was actually unaware of this. I mean, this is the main fire station.
Right.
I'm not sure, was it a former gasoline station or a service station? I'm not, they were wells already in the ground. I believe during construction, some of the wells might have gotten damaged, and DEP sent us a.
Yeah, it was both. It was a long time ago.
It was both, yeah. And DEP sent us a letter that said that some of the sampling had not been done. The wells need to be reconstructed or opened back up again, and sampling had to be taken, but it was not in the Board of Health's budget, I can tell you right now.
No, no, my only, to his purpose, my question was, again, if it had come in six months ago, I was going to say it should have gone to the Finance Committee then and not now. That was, that was it.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we received the invoice on June 17th.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of $16,500 from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund to the Board of Health expense budget for the well-replacement services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Carter, do you have anything? All right.
All day.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewens says aye.
Mr. Carter says aye.
All right, thank you. It is unanimous, and I believe that concludes our transfers for the evening.
Um, through you, Mr. Chair, thank you for taking time to, you know, to approve these transfers. You know, I look forward to working with the Select Board and, you know, if there's any questions or additional information you need. I've been really trying hard to make sure that what we do is very transparent, that there are no surprises in, you know, having meetings. I had several meetings, you know, four or five meetings with the Finance Committee Chair reviewing these budgets on a regular basis, so that, you know, there were no surprises. But thank you for approval on the transfers.
We, we certainly appreciate all your hard work, and we know there's a lot of challenges out there with the computer system and everything going on. So we appreciate all your hard work. And again, if any members of the board has, have particular financial questions they have, please reach out to Ms. Praval, and she can get you that information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Praval.
Thank you. All right. All right, moving right along, we have a town administrator update.
Sure, and I'll be quick, Mr. Chairman. One thing, the, the fire department has received a UTV, which is a utility terrain vehicle purchased with federal opera funds, and it has been delivered to the fire station. You know, these are utility vehicles that can go out into the woods. I know when I was in the town of Rochester, there was an 81-year-old man who had been out hunting, became dehydrated and disoriented, and it was a lifesaving event for this vehicle to be able to reach him and then to take him out of the woods. I can't remember if he was a mile or two miles deep, you know, without any roads, really. So, you know, that was quite a feat by, by them, and it's a good thing for us to have that. I did attend a Plymouth County outreach meeting with the police chief, and I'm going to read some of this. Plymouth County Outreach is a multi-faceted collaboration of 27 municipal police departments in Plymouth County, as well as Bridgewater State University Police Department, working together with recovery coaches and community organizations and coalitions to make treatment resources and harm reduction tools more accessible to people who use drugs and their loved ones. Our goal is to provide compassionate, judgment-free support while reducing overdose fatalities. This is a program that was previously funded through a federal grant. That federal grant has now stopped. We do receive opioid funding, though, from the lawsuits that we have, so this seems, the chief brought this to me. Seems like an appropriate use for this to continue. They did have us, you know, give us a, a graphic here where they've saved over 50 lives in the past few years. So, you know, these are 50 families that are significantly involved in that, so I thought that was a good use of, for us, $15,000. It is all the communities in Plymouth County all getting together, including the, the city of Brockton. I, I can't remember, the city of Brockton was committed to over $100,000, you know, taking up the bulk of it, but, you know, believe it or not, we have quite a few overdoses right here in town, and, you know, the funding is the appropriate use for that.
I think that's a, a great use of that funding, and, and I'd, I'd love for the, the public to know about that. Maybe the next time you put a town administrator newsletter together, you could include that, that sheet in the town, in the newsletter.
Just so the, the public is aware, on Friday and Saturday, we're anticipating the library to be closed. We are replacing the skylights. That was part of the original project. They've been holding off for these skylights to arrive and also for the engineer to come up with drawings to make sure they fit in there. They are closing it, just as a precaution, you know, just in case something falls while they're working, if somebody drops a hammer or something like that, they may be to get hurt. But, so the library is anticipated to be closed on Friday and Saturday this week.
Can we get something up on the website and an email sent out to let people know about that?
And then the last thing I have is we did receive a $22,000 supplemental appropriation from the state. This is Senator Duna helped us get this. It is for waste, I'm sorry, stormwater infrastructure improvements off of Center Street and Wenton Road. I believe we have a catch basin there that dumps into a cranberry bog that's washing out, actually washing out the cranberry bog, so good, again, appropriation, additional appropriation of $22,000, and we thank Senator Duna for her hard work on that. And that, that's all I have.
Okay. Can I just ask you, before we move on, do you have any type of update from the fair on any of the things that we discussed at last week's meeting, especially the lined parking lot? Is there any update there?
I, I do not. They are still working on that, I know. Over the, the fourth holiday, I think they took a little break from that, so we'll get back at that, and I'll, I'll reach out to them and see where we stand.
We, we have a long time between tonight's meeting and our next scheduled meeting in August, so could you maybe, you know, just maybe on a weekly basis, send an email out to the board updating us on where that stands and what's, once everything we put on those licenses is complied with?
Yeah.
So we, so we know. All right. Any, any questions on the town administrator's update from anybody?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
All right. Moving on, we have, let's see, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair. Forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting, we have a request to use town-owned property, Shirliff Park for the Shovel Rock Band on July 18th, 2025, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And the only question I have on that, Mr. Cannon, so that is a week, what, weeknight, it's Friday night. Do we know, we discussed earlier, the sound rules in town, does 11:00 PM create a problem there?
I, I do not know the answer to that, but we can check on that.
Okay. Well, I would recommend that the board possibly condition approval on complying with whatever the town sound regulations are.
We should ask the police chief.
We should.
We do not have a sound in.
I don't believe there's a noise bylaw.
There's no-
Yeah, there is.
Oh, there is.
I'm pretty sure. That's all right. I think the Board of Health used to, to do that, but I think might be placed-
No, most towns have them.
Yeah.
Anyway, that was the only question I had on, on that. Most of the things we approved don't go till 11 o'clock at night, so.
And I had a question, too. Did we vote last meeting? We had a, we voted on a license for them to use Shirliff Park at our last meeting, I thought. Do you have the?
I don't, I don't recall.
I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah.
I don't have last week's, last time, week's agenda.
Because we, we took a vote last meeting for the same band.
Well.
So I don't know if this is redundant, that's why I'm asking. Do you have, do you have the minutes from last week, or?
Even if it was, it wouldn't be, they can only have one license.
Correct, there's only going to have more, it'll be one event.
Yeah, I just want to see what we voted on last week.
I think it's Shove.
Shove, it is Shove.
I don't think it's Shovel.
That's an exclamation point.
I know.
Oh, I'm sorry, I read too fast. Thank you for correcting me.
I misread it.
Thank you for correcting me.
Yeah, they, they played at the Fourth of July Parade in Plymouth, too.
Is it last week?
Yeah, last meeting, or last time we met. No? Okay. I remember them coming up.
They have been something different.
Was it for some other license, maybe?
I want to say there was an event at Shirliff Park. I don't remember the band Shove.
Yeah, there was an event. I don't remember what it was.
All right, well, we can vote again, and I'll look them up.
Yeah, it won't hurt, it won't hurt if you voted twice, right?